Session started. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Vois.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Mrs. Juin.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda as presented and the minutes of the October 18th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right. Full counsel for the work session. Mr. Van Fleet.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for, uh, thank you for having us. I'm Andy Van Fleet. I'm the Commissioner of the Waterloo Telecom Utility. Um, I've been working for the last couple of years with a very impressive group of people that have been educated through this process. So, uh, Mike Young and Rich Curtinback are here, but also Anessa Kachivik and Teddy Bateman's here as well. So, I want to thank them for their support and, uh, Ms. Sharon Juon is also part of the team. So, um, before I turn it over to Courtney Violet from Magellan's, who's our advisor in this whole process, um, just to say thank you to this team for the hard work and the, you know, incredible education that we've gotten in learning about what it is to put in a, um, this type of a system into Waterloo. So, um, there's a couple of parts to it that we've, that we've gone through. There's the backbone and then there's the other part of it as well, which is fiber to the home. So Courtney's going to go through some of, just an overview of what we've done so far. And, uh, Steve Nadal is the, uh, City Bond Attorney that's in, uh, Des Moines, who will also be supporting this, uh, conversation with, um, uh, any questions that we might have. So, I think then also the mayor's got some comments. And then we have a video that we'll show you as well that was shown in the, um, the, the, uh, vision, um, uh, presentation just recently. But it's a great vision that shows what Waterloo can be when it comes to fiber and, um, something that is hugely needed in our area in order to be competitive. When we go into the next phase of where we're at with the workforce, myself included, you know, trying to recruit, uh, work, workers to this area and to have, um, significant broadband in this area is something that's going to be continued to be important as we move forward. So, uh, anything else that I can share with you? Certainly ask questions. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to you Courtney for an overview and, um, you can share with the group where we've been on this journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. And, uh, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Nice to be with you this evening. Uh, my name is Courtney Violet. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Magellan Advisors, and I've been working with the city now for nearly two years. Um, you all may remember, um, earlier this year back in April, uh, we were contracted for the first initial phase of the city's backbone project. Uh, the fiber optic backbone was intended to connect the stormwater utility, uh, and the sanitary sewer utility systems. Uh, those are both, uh, plants as well as lift stations and pump stations and other assets around the community, uh, to a fiber optic backbone. Um, that project was about 65 miles, um, uh, backbone. Uh, just about two months ago, um, the city authorized another 40 miles of backbone. Um, those, uh, portions of the backbone are targeted at more general city sites, um, things like city facilities and community centers and parks and public safety, um, traffic cameras. Uh, for both of the backbone projects, we are approximately 60% completed with that design. Um, Phase One's a little bit ahead of the Phase Two portion of that project. Um, the 60% design documents have been submitted over to the city for review, um, as of September. And, um, again, we are moving forward on the backbone, uh, as intended. Um, our plan at this point is to have the backbone substantially complete. Um, it's looking like probably right after the first of the year sometime, maybe January, February. Um, we are contracted to not only provide the design for the backbone, which includes construction drawings, um, which underground contractors could bid from, uh, but we are also contracted to provide engineer's estimates, uh, specs and standards for that project, uh, as well as any bid documents for the backbone portion of the doc, of the project. Um, as you also remember earlier this year, there was some discussion around a potential fiber to the home project. Um, that project is a much larger, um, version of the backbone, if you will, and consists, uh, as we estimate it, over 310 miles of additional potential construction. Um, if you remember, a potential fiber to the home project is intended to virtually build down every street and build into every neighborhood, every business district, and is meant to pass or allow access to the network from any residential or business property or community anchor within the city of Waterloo. Um, that project, um, again, we have not moved forward with any, uh, of the fiber to the home portions of this project. Um, that is, uh, in a proposal before you this evening. Uh, and again, with the fiber to the home portion of the project, it would also, uh, conclude with full construction drawings, um, engineer's estimates, as well as bid documents, specs and standards, um, from which the, the city could then solicit for construction. Um, as we all know, the biggest portion of these projects is, you know, defining the cost estimates and understanding what it's going to take to build, uh, these portions of the project. Uh, and really getting to that design is the next big part. That would inform both the communications utility and the city as to what the final costs are and give you, uh, the decisions, uh, or the information you need to make some decisions. So, again, backbone design is meant to, uh, go into early next year, January, February timeframe. Uh, and again, we are, uh, looking for city's direction on fiber to the home design. Uh, Mayor, that is my update, and I'm obviously happy to take questions.
Well, uh, you know, thank you so much. Um, we, uh, know that this is a tedious process, and it's, uh, been incredible, uh, having your leadership and also, uh, to our telecommunications board, who's really doing, uh, yeoman's work trying to, um, move this, um, process forward after talking about it for about 20, 20-plus years. So, uh, thank you, Andy. Thank you, team, and, uh, Magellan as well. Uh, we do have a, uh, short video that we'll end with, but right now, uh, are there any questions from our All right, let's, uh, load the video.
by its planned fiber optic backbone, laying the foundation for a potential universal fiber to the home project. Initially, Waterloo's fiber backbone will connect all aspects of city government to include our utilities, traffic signals, city buildings, public safety assets and parks, community centers, and important public spaces throughout our community. Now it is time, Waterloo, to take our place among the fastest, the strongest, the smartest cities in America and across the globe. It is time for us, our families, our friends, our businesses, and our entire community to experience a super fast, super reliable, and a super connected city delivered right to our doorstep. Waterloo's investment in fiber is an investment in our community-owned digital infrastructure operated locally by the city where we live. We are making it accessible. We are making it affordable. We are making it attractive for business interests, growth, development, and job creation. We are striving to create new business opportunities, a fiber network that meets the demands of today while preparing our community for the technology needs of tomorrow. Waterloo is getting ready for the future.
So, uh, exciting first steps being taken, and then, um, a little bit later, uh, the next step for the design to the home. So, uh, any questions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, are there aspects of this that, um, uh, it, it sounds like something, uh, we're going to be voting on after a little while. Anyway, are there, are you going to address those during the time that that comes up, or do you want to address any of them now?
Um, probably, probably can wait till then if you want to. And in that way, uh, once the public, public is all there. But this is just an introduction, just to, uh, talk about the design. But, um, Courtney and Courtney, are you guys going to be around during the meeting?
Yes, sir. I planned on it.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Does Andy stand too? Will he stand?
Is Mr. Curtinback?
Or any other board members?
Mr. Young.
All right. Um, do we want to answer questions? How many millimeters we have left?
Next, it's at 410.
410.
Probably got to keep them moving.
All right, all right. So, we can ask those questions then. Mr. Morrissey?
Okay.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you Courtney and staff, and thank you guys for showing up this evening too as well. So, uh, those that can stick around, uh, you may want to go eat and then come back a little bit later.
Go have dinner.
All our meetings are long. All right. Uh, 410 is an operations update from our Building Department and Community Development. So, I think first up, we have Greg.
Hello. Greg Allhelm, Building Department. I'll start with our mission statement. It's to gain compliance with minimum standards.
Can you talk into, can you bring the mic over?
Sure. Minimum standards regulating building and structures to efficiently and professionally serve the citizens and business owners of Waterloo with inspections to help in the protection of individuals, employees, structural safety, infrastructure, and the general public. The Building Department strives to help create safe living, working, and visitor environment in the construction and growth of the community. Some of the things we typically oversee is general construction, uh, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, assist with fire safety. We do the fog inspections and rental inspections as well. Staff consists of building official and a plans examiner, uh, six building inspectors, two safety inspectors, a fog inspector, which we're currently looking to get hired, uh, one permit writer, and two secretaries. Um, daily, we, uh, write permits at the counter, residential, commercial. Uh, we do plan submittals, and we do all residential and commercial plan reviews for their, for those as well daily. Uh, typically, we allow two weeks for plan reviews. Uh, we process fees, collect, uh, collected for permits by fax, email, and electronically when possible. Uh, we do inspections in the field for the city and the county that we're contracted to do, and we take many questions from the public daily. Monthly, we do licensed contractor testing, and annually, we continue to cross-train inspectors and help with other types of inspections during time off or during illnesses. Uh, last year, and kind of an overview, we had, uh, 63 new residential units, 72 new garages, 41 new commercial buildings, nine commercial additions, 86 commercial remodels, and we wrote a total of 6,750 permits that included repairs for plumbing, heating, electrical, uh, which would average 27 permits a day or about five inspections per inspector each day. Uh, Black Hawk County, again, as I said earlier, we contracted to work with Black Hawk County. Uh, where we do, uh, everything's billed per hour, and, uh, this is through partnership with professional staff of the city of Waterloo, and we're able to do Black Hawk County for appropriate inspections for construction in the unincorporated areas of the county. Last year, we did a total of 411 permits and many inspections as well, obviously. Um, the Building Department, uh, we strive to have a professional and efficient, efficient Building Department. It's crucial to continued development. For the city of Waterloo, the Building Department staff is critical to making projects commence, stay on time, and help developers and investors meet the timeline for the completion of their projects. City of Waterloo previously received an ISO rating of 3.8, which, that's a system of measuring the effectiveness of the Building Department as a whole, which is scored after a visit and a review of the entire department by International Building Code Board. The lower the score, the better, and three is considered to be an excellent rating. We currently just had another review in September, and I should be getting those results back. They do it about every four years. Um, last year at a glance, we did 140.6 million in permit valuation, which I believe is the fourth highest, and that was through COVID as well. Uh, we had 19 new units. Uh, we had a total of 63 new homes. And some of the new commercial projects that took place, we had Osprey Hanger, the new hospice office, Club Car Wash, the new strip mall that's going to house Papa John's and the Family Dollar, and, uh, we're underway with the central middle school renovations and additions, and construction continues on Lost Island amusement as well. Our goal is looking ahead is to continue to look at new codes for proper safety in building design and construction, continue to look for efficient ways, and make contact with the public and contractors, continue to efficiently and professionally perform over 10,000 inspections, and continue to cross-train employees through training certification and hiring practice. And going back to number one, we will be bringing the code change for the 2021 here in the, I think it's on December 6th, we're going to have a work session. So, we're looking to move from the 15 to the 21, which the state's moving in January, so we're kind of forced. They don't want us to be more than two cycles behind. So, in order for the HVAC and the plumbing to communicate, we need to make the change. And it helps with our ISO rating as well. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Greg, uh, a couple of things. First of all, uh, over the course of, let's just say five years, five to 10 years, well, five years, have there been any increases in permit fees, licenses, or any kind of, uh, money that's charged, uh, through your department?
We have not made any changes, no.
No changes. So, they have remained static for at least the last five years?
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, I note that there has been continuing discussion of the need for rental inspectors. Where are we at with that in your opinion?
Well, we plan on, with the new position that we're hiring, we're going to have them assist with the rental inspections part-time as well. And I believe community development is also picking up an inspector.
Inspector regarding?
Just for, for rentals, yes.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Great, great.
Mr. Bowser.
Yeah, just, uh, a quick question on, on that, uh, permit fees. And it's, is, like Mr. Morrissey said, it's been five years. How, where are we at competitive wise with Cedar Falls?
I've looked, Cedar Falls is just a, they're, if you look at their fee schedule, I think they're like a dollar. They start out a dollar higher than us, and then it goes in increments. But we are kind of at the top of the food chain, so I, I don't really feel we should change it.
You're not recommending that we raise our fees to offset revenue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just kind of a stupid question. Greg, do we still have plan room? And where is it?
We don't. We have a scanner, and we scan everything in now.
So, we don't have the plans on hand?
We don't.
Everybody?
We lost a lot in the 2008 flood, and it was just so hard to keep track of them that way that we decided to scan them in, so we have it digitally.
Okay, okay. Good. And that's working out okay for the contractors?
Yeah, it seems to be. The, the designers keep plans on hand too, like Modus, they have a whole room for that. So, if they need something, they want to look at a full set, they're always available.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One final question. Greg and I should, I should have, Mr. Mayor, asked this of all the different departments that have spoken, but how is your department getting through COVID?
Well, how we handled it, uh, we didn't go to any homes other than for gas-fired equipment that needed to be inspected, because that's definitely life safety. Uh, once COVID kind of died down, then we went in to look at some of the remodel work. We'd still continue to do the inspections on the roof, siding, windows, decks, things of that nature. The commercial trades, they pretty much went on business as usual. Of course, we social distanced, wore our masks. Uh, we're considered essential, so we were still writing permits at the counter and, and doing the inspections.
And how about the employees?
As far as our employees in the office?
Right. Are they weathering this okay?
Yes, yep. Everybody's coming through it all right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and we administer social distancing and things throughout the offices. And then, if you notice, a nice new Plexiglas in front so that we can maintain some distance between, uh, the counter and, uh, the staff as well. And then, um, did you put a printer outside the office or some type of scanner? Did we do anything like that?
We did.
How did, how did we do with technology-wise?
It was still within our confines there.
Okay.
So, it was pretty much business as usual, other than just being smart about how we did it.
All right.
I just had another follow-up.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for that, because Mr. Morrissey got me thinking. So, when, during this COVID, when you, when you were staying out of, of residenials except for the, except for the gas inspections, so we didn't do any cover inspections or anything like that prior to people sheet rocking and remodels?
If, if there was an opportunity for them to send good video or good photos, we did look at some of those that way. But some of it, we were able, the window was so short that it really didn't hurt us.
Okay. I'd, because I'd be worried liability-wise if?
Yeah, no.
If we're signing off on something and we didn't, we didn't really do a cover inspection.
Yeah, no, we definitely didn't let them cover, and we, we really didn't have an issue with it.
Okay.
So, it worked out well.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, everyone. Rudy Jones, City of Waterloo, Community Development, uh, Director. I have before you our mission statement, which is to take the federal funds we receive annually and put them to use to provide, uh, decent, safe, and sanitary housing throughout the community. We've expanded on that to include rental units, and that's primarily through our lead remediation grant. But we also work with a lot of non-for-profits to provide services that a lot of our, uh, citizens need throughout the community. I, I'm not going to read everything that you have before you. I'd really like to get to the point where we can talk about where we're at and where we're headed, unless you have specific questions about our mission statement. If not, I'll keep moving. Some of the duties that we are familiar with are our rehab program, where we take eligible homeowners, and we combine our regular CDBG dollars with our lead remediation grant to address lead hazards in the home. Typically, the replacement of, uh, windows that might have a lead, uh, paint base, uh, doors, uh, exterior could be siding, it could be sometimes, uh, garages, but anything that would have a lead hazard, uh, with homes that are built prior to 1978. We expanded the grant request, uh, over the last two cycles to begin to bring rental units into play. When we first applied, we were looking at a 75% city fund matched with 25% landlords, had no takers. Uh, but after we got the grant, we had the money, so we went 100% towards the landlord, uh, units up to $20,000. If the assessment called for 25 or $30,000, the landlord had to come up with that difference. So, we're making some, uh, headway with that. And as mentioned before, we're also going to be working towards providing, uh, funds for a rental housing inspector, having some conversations with our Omaha Field Office to make sure we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed. That should enable us to gain some ground with what's been going on in our community with our rental units. Uh, we also have, uh, as a prominent, uh, service, emergency repairs. This last year, uh, we had a record number of emergency repairs that we, uh, performed. And even during the COVID, that was probably the only service that we did not stop. Uh, if somebody had need for a furnace, we continued to provide those. If somebody needed a roof, we still provided, uh, assistance with that. If they needed a water service repair, those things, as mentioned, are kind of life safety kind of things that we were able to continue, uh, taking the necessary precautions during that time of, uh, having the homeowners, uh, meet their eligibility with the paperwork. They would either drop them off, they could fill them out, email them back to us, whatever worked for them while staying socially distanced. We are fortunate to have received also CARES Act funding, uh, Rounds 1, 2, and 3. And the challenge, uh, with that has been a lot of new regulatory, uh, things that, uh, were coming out long after the dollars were distributed. Uh, we had a number of agencies that, uh, came alongside us to help, uh, residents throughout the community with rent assistance, with mortgage assistance, uh, utility assistance. Uh, we provided some dollars to the food bank, and you've got that list in front of you as well. One thing that was a challenge over the last 12 months, we'll say, was the price of building materials that went literally through the roof. I mean, we're talking about 10, 15, 20, up to 50% for some particular items. But there was also the, uh, not just price increase, it was also the delay of getting those materials onto the project sites. Uh, that has tremendously pushed our lead grant benchmarks back, uh, to where the lead time from the time we sign contract to the time we get contractors on the project was somewhere between four to six weeks. Uh, some cases, it's moved out to 12 to 15 weeks, which basically just shifts a whole quarter's worth of benchmarks. We think we might be able to catch up with some of those once we get through the winter months and construction season picks back up, especially where we have projects where we have exterior repairs such as siding, exterior doors, and those kind of things. But we're looking forward to a very busy, a very aggressive spring. I told the staff, all we want to see is sawdust flying, uh, come the first of, uh, the year once we're able to get back out into projects. We've got some excellent partners in both our rehabilitation program, but we've been struggling with capacity. program, but we've been struggling with capacity, where if we don't have enough competitive bidders, then they're subject to get logjammed, once they get so many projects that they just can't keep up with. So we've been trying to bring in qualified, eligible contractors at every discipline. We need additional electricians, we need additional plumbers, we just need additional staff in the construction field, as we all are aware of. So some days, I'll start out as Dr. Jekyll, but by lunch, I'm Mr. Hyde, to make sure that folks stay on the projects and get things done. We've taken the cap off of some of our projects, simply because with the pandemic, there was the loss of income, there was the loss of hours. And where we used to have a grant loan combination, some folks just didn't have the funds. And so we were able to cover those losses by making some, what we'll call temporary policy adjustments that we'll be evaluating at the end of the year, so we can make sure that people are able to stay in their homes. With roof projects, we just had an enormous year doing roof projects. We've got an ever-aging housing stock. And one thing that we sometimes fail to notice is, every house, some of the new ones that were mentioned, they all have the DNA of Slum and Blight built in. It's just going to be 20, 30, 40 years down the road. But the existing housing stock, it's really a challenge to make sure we can have people to remain in their homes in a safe, decent, sanitary state. So the most recent funding stream, the American Rescue Plan, still working through a lot of what we can and a lot of what we can't do. We anticipate, over the next three months, having what's called a consultation. That's where we meet with homeless and homeless service providers to see what they think might be some of the best uses of those dollars. And then we'll have our public combat period. We're trying to run those simultaneously with our annual plan. So we're going to be busy. The business is what we do. Questions, comments?
Just a, Rudy, do you still serve as our compliance officer? Are you still reviewing all of those contracts as they come through?
As they come through, yes, yes. We've been a little slack, but we've got some very good contractors, general contractors that understand, and they've worked with us. They've been very cooperative and-
Well, I just feel comfortable knowing that you're reviewing them, and thank you for that. That adds to your workload, I know. So thank you.
Mr. Amos.
Rudy, one of my questions is, and you talked about it, is benchmarks based off of a grant. Now, when you get those grants, you set benchmarks to try and reach a certain number of individuals. And I guess my question is, if you don't reach those benchmarks that you've set for yourself, is there a penalty from a grant standpoint or anything like that? Or how does that work?
Most years, maybe. But the first year of the pandemic was our last year of our lead grant. We were not able to spend a million dollars, which in essence went back to the federal government. But we used that time to kind of reconfigure our program. We tried to build our contracted capacity. We applied for additional new dollars. And I think we did some things right that enabled us to be awarded a new grant. So what we're doing, and it's not just our community, it's nationwide, that we think we still have one of the better processes and programs that enable us to move towards those benchmarks, which are basically what we would do on average, even if we didn't have the lead grant dollars.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor. Rudy, question I have is sort of a hypothetical, but at the same time, it's not. I think it's sort of practical. And that is, we all know, we've all been going through the COVID-19, and what's that caused? You even talked about and alluded to it with the cost going up. Well, with the cost of these projects, and the cost of materials, and with it, the cost of labor going up, but having said that, with that going up exponentially, do then, in turn, the guidelines for eligibility to these homeowners that have these problems, do those guidelines go down so that people can afford the projects where the cost is going, excuse me, exponentially high?
A part of what has been a challenge is, we don't penalize the homeowner, but HUD has made the allowance that any project that's higher than average $30,000, $40,000, we have to resubmit to them for a high-cost approval. We've had more high-cost approval projects this last year than we've ever had. And that's because the price of materials going up. But we're still able to get them done. We'll probably run out of money before we run out of projects, which is going to be okay. HUD is not going to be, I don't think they're going to be punitive either way. They really haven't said a whole lot. They've been understanding that this is going on throughout the whole nation.
And Rudy, my concern is, because we've talked about this for several years, since I've been on council, I know that we have, and that is those groups of people, whether they be middle-aged, whether they be elderly, fixed income or whatever, low income, but they slipping through the cracks, even middle-income people-
Right.
-who are on fixed income, slipping through the cracks. And what I see is that, and I mean, this is just my personal opinion, but that with what has happened with COVID and the exponential increase in those, that we're going to have more people slipping through the cracks.
Hopefully, not as many as we can handle. As I stated before, we had a record number of people that went through our emergency repair program. We're doing roof repairs that are averaging $12,000 to $15,000, where two years ago, the maximum we would use was four. And then we use some housing trust fund dollars to backfill that four if more was needed. At some points in times, we've had help with other philanthropic organizations to help those that are lowest of income, somewhere between the 30% and 50% of AMI, area median income. If we don't make those necessary repairs to at least the roof envelope, then that's the first sign that we're going to lose that house sooner or later. So we're trying to throw everything we can at it.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
And Rudy, do you have some other partners, too? It's their Waterloo Housing Trust?
Yeah.
A number of different agencies that you partner with throughout the community across the state, correct?
Yes, yes. We just got great partners. Northeast Iowa area agency on aging. We were hoping to have received a home modification grant through them. We didn't, but we'll get a review to see kind of how we scored. But they help us with projects that help our elderly stay in their homes. Even when we don't get that grant, they're one of the board members of the trust fund in town. So Operation Threshold, Habitat, we've got what we call the Continuum of Care, which are agencies that address homelessness and homeless prevention. So we don't do this apart from them. It takes everybody having their place on the wall.
Right. And through these conversations, one of the things we wanted to do over the course of the last year is start taking deep-dive looks into, you know, what policies that we have internally. Do they need to be upgraded? Is there something that needs to happen to this particular ordinance? And then kind of comparing those across the entire state of Iowa, looking for some best practices to see what we can do internally. The next thought is, after the beginning of the year, to make that a little bit more external. The University of Iowa has done a series of different projects in here for us to be able to look at it, because we realized there's a process to a house or a housing situation, that something had happened over the course of the time. Was it delayed maintenance? Was it economics? Was it we had one family member, that person passed away, and another person got that house? But just trying to figure out what's actually happened. I think it was when I first started, I think we did a State of the City over at Cunningham, and it was a pledge that all the houses that we currently have right now, we're going to tear those down. But as soon as you tear those houses down, you have another 20, 30, 40, 50 that's waiting. And so a gentleman had brought me a paper, a newspaper, from 50, 60 years ago, and that mayor made that statement, we're going to do this. Then he showed me the next 15, 20 years later, the mayor said, we're going to tear down these houses. And then you go to the original statement I made, we're going to tear down these houses. So what we've been trying to do is take a deep-dive look into actually having transformative change and helping to uplift these properties, and also deal with some of the challenges that people are facing on a daily basis, so we don't continue the same cycle. So we've been meeting internally to start off and to have those conversations.
I failed to mention that we've allocated about a half a million dollars towards new construction down payment assistance over the next year. So we have to do both at the same time. We have to rehab that which we can, but we also have to create a new housing stock as we go along.
Right. And the processes don't look the same, you know, to say you can't solve today's problems with the same mindset that created them. So when we take a look at community development, too, there's a lot of housing projects and starts out there that people don't even realize. Over behind Walmart, Mallmore, East 8th, East 9th, Summerlin, Madison Monroe, the Hawkeye portions, and your contributions to that and to the Walnut area. So, you know, things don't go as fast as they could, but you got to start somewhere. And we've been fortunate enough to be able to roll up our sleeves and start to make some systematic incremental impact. So thank you for your efforts, efforts as well. Any last questions for Mr. Jones before he departs?
Good job, Rudy. Good job.
Let your staff know, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. All right. The next project, I think this is me doing this one, and probably about a year and a half, two years ago, we began having conversations about our downtown, and not just about our downtown, but how can we create experiences? And how can we brand our community in a way that is appreciative of the history and dedication and sacrifice of the many people within Waterloo and the entire Cedar Valley? And one area that we chose to highlight, along with Kelly Sullivan, John Roof, and some of our other partners, and plus Van De Waal, was to kind of come on with the theme of called Veterans Way. Waterloo has a significant veteran population in our community, and it is imperative that we recognize those contributions and to the so many that have paid the ultimate sacrifice to our community. So we thought, what better way to brand our community, brand downtown, create experiences where young people can learn, as well as our seniors and other people that have served, to be able to see themselves. So we focused on what we call the Veterans Way Project. Veterans, being able to highlight a veteran's way that begins at the Sullivan Brothers Museum, and transcends all the way to Sullivan Park, and being able to take a look at some of these projects, and how we can tie all those themes together. So where are we at? So let's go to Slide 3. And this is one that we have been working on, and it is the Sullivan Brothers Family Memorial. As we know, the Sullivan Brothers have played a significant role in changing our cities. Is this microphone working? Seems like it's going in and out. Sullivan Brothers have played a monumental part in just the history of veterans for the entire United States, and they're near and dear brothers within the city of Waterloo. So we sat down, several of us, and as I mentioned, Kelly and John, and talked about what can we possibly do? What are some themes that we can try to utilize the convention center? And so this is the concept we had come up with. And as you see in the circle, it says central circle and together. That word means so much, because all of us understand that we can accomplish so much together than we can being divided from one another. When you see the oval shape, these are the symbolic pavers that are there. You see four of them. And on the left side of those pavers, or south side of each of the four ovals, there will be a picture that the Sullivans had chosen to be representative of their family. But one of the things that we realized, and what was stated by Kelly, is that there's a lot of sacrifice by many everyday people as well. So on the right side of the oval, or to the north side of the oval, there will be a picture of some type of sacrifice and dedication. It could be someone building a home, it could be a nurse, it could be our public safety. But it will highlight on that other side, people that have stood in the gap to give dedicated service to our community. So one side, some history about the family, the other side will showcase dedication and service by community members, everyday community members. There'll be some seating and a planted bed. There'll be welcome panels to the Plaza Memorial. If you take a look around the other portions, you see other planning beds to the east or southeast portion, along with seats for people to be able to sit in and to be able to experience and enjoy the memorial. So we wanted, though, this whole thing was not to be a tomb. The idea, what this was lively, this was educational, this is something that people can actually see and learn from throughout the process. So we have been working on this probably about a year and a half, and even later, we've had more input given on how to actually make this more welcoming for the community in a place that people want to be. And the understanding, this does not replace the Veterans Museum. This is all part of an experience that people will be able to come to this community and trek along 1.7 miles of our investment from our veterans throughout the community. The next project that's listed on there on Slide number four is a bridge lighting project. And as you know, the Canopy Bridge has been one that's, for many, has been a historic place. People even today are going out taking pictures in front of that portion of the bridge. But this will be a bridge lighting project. As you remember, we had a consultant, Shakespeare, some time ago. WDC actually paid for the design work to make our bridge lighting cascade off the river, and to be able to light up, also along with towers as well. So this portion, we are looking out there for grant funding. WDC has contributed some. We're looking to gaming and trying to find some other partners that will be able to help and support this portion of the project. And you can kind of see how it looks. If you go to the next slide, it'll give you just a little idea of what we'll be able to do to create another downtown experience. The next one is right across, we had found out that the, next to the parking ramp, that the parking ramp and sides were kind of soiled. It was a little bit dirty and dark and kind of dreary. So what we've been trying to figure out is, how can we take some of the existing spots that we have and be able to turn those into transformational pieces that are going to bring people to the downtown and keep them there? This location on Pocket Park is actually across the street from the Best Western. You can kind of see the sky ramp that goes over. But it's taking that spot that's dreary, looks unsafe, creating and turning it into Pocket Park where- creating and turning it into Pocket Park where we'll be able to showcase public art and veteran art showcase pieces there. And it can be a community gathering space as well for people that are at the convention center that want to come over and sit down or if you're at the hotel. But it would be one of the first of its kind in the entire state that utilizes public art to infuse the veteran story, but also showcase local artists directly within our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we ask questions?
Uh, yeah.
Like where exactly would this Pocket Park be located?
That's a good question, because you've driven past it every day and never even paid attention to it. So you know where the GR is at, the Ground Round Downtown? Right across, I think it's the Waterloo Building? What's this?
That's to the west of it.
Yeah, it's a little parking ramp area right across where Paco's and stuff used to be over in there on the corner of East 4th Street and Commercial. West 4th Street, yeah. You've driven past it a million times.
But there is grassy area.
It is grassy, it's just never...
Been used or anything?
I'm a Ward 3 councilman, and I don't even know my word. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
But, yeah.
It doesn't look like that.
No, it doesn't look like that at all. Actually, when you look and see the whole area is very dreary. It doesn't look like a place you may want to be. But this is a way to open that space up, put some lighting in it, put public art, and be able to bring people to this area. So that's Pocket Park. The next one is the Waterloo Convention Sinage, which we've already talked about that. That is the large Waterloo sign with the 3D information board. And then this one is the Living Lamps under the 4th Street underpass. Right now, walking under there is very, very dreary. Doesn't look like there's a connection for you to be able to walk from the Sullivan Brothers all the way across to the 4th Street and the Lou Henry Hoover area. So these living lamps will give more light, create a better experience outside of the box, and use this form of light art to be able to connect our downtown. The next one is the Veterans Way Walk Design, and that is uniting various themes to highlight veterans within the community. As you can see, just some examples of Army veteran and different signage for us to be able to acknowledge our incredible efforts of our veterans. You know, also, we're taking a look at streetscape and pedestrian connectivity, which I just mentioned, with our bike lanes, our sidewalks, our street trees will be an incredible enhancement overall to our downtown and create a safe passageway. And so that's part of the first phases of this. Of course, we have Veterans Memorial Downtown as well. We need to continue to think about that and think about upgrades to Sullivan Park. But for this first part, this is, these are the areas that we've talked about. And so Billy has been to some meetings. Jessica is engaged as well from Main Street. So what better way to brag about how strong of a community we have by showcasing our veterans and letting them know that we honor and we cherish their dedication and sacrifice? And that's the Veterans Way, service and sacrifice. So we'll be able to highlight this. We are out looking for grant funding. So we are doing our best. We've been in contact with some of our funding agencies locally, and we're taking a look nationally for opportunities. But I think it's a great way for us to honor those that have given so much in our community and those that continue to sacrifice on our behalf. So any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Once again, just thinking and looking at the map of where Veterans Way is going to be, it looks like it's going to be going from approximately South Street on 4th Street all the way down through the convention center, the five Sullivan Brothers.
And then eventually beyond with Sullivan Park and also putting up, absolutely.
Another phase, I take it?
Yep.
Okay, so, but, so what, in looking at that, I know, and I think Billy, yeah, Billy Bailey is here from the Grouse. It sure would be great if there was some way to have an exit that would go right on to 4th Street easily so that people could leave the Grouse or go to the Grouse up 4th Street, the Veterans Way, so that they didn't have to make that jog going down Park Avenue then cutting over to 4th Street. But I guess you get to go through Lou Henry Hoover Park also on the way. So, but it sure would be nice if there was some kind of exit or entrance which was readily pedestrian-friendly from the Grouse down to 4th Street, because I know there's not one right now, unless you want to roll down a hill.
Yeah. Billy, have you all taken a look at that option? Or is that something I can start to have Van De Waal take a look at? Yeah, it's kind of like Washington Street, which is kind of almost like a highway pass-through. And then you have the over, so, I mean, it'd be hard to, you can go underground. No, do you? Is there anything? So we can have those conversations though, but it's a tough, tough situation. Put a roundabout there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in absentia, I am proxying my vote to have a walkway connection down to 4th Street, even if it means, and, no, I'm not gonna say the word escalator, but if it included 12 steps going up and going down on the 4th Street, so we'd have a complete Veterans Way that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, a stupid question, but where does 4th Street cross underneath 218?
Where's the parking at? The parking is...
Where?
So are you talking about from the accessway? Or are you talking about from 218?
Are you talking to me or no?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm talking about as you leave the Grouse. Right now, if you leave the Grouse, you go out in a parking lot, but there's no steps down to 4th Street at all. There are?
There are?
Yep, over by the law office.
Where?
Billy, could you come to the mic?
Down that grassy slope?
No.
No, but there's a retaining wall, and then there are steps.
Could you state your name, name for the record and your association?
We all know Billy.
Billy Bailey, Director of the Grouse Museum District. And I'm really sorry, I'm not doing this in the right order. Okay, if you walk out the door of the Grouse into the parking lot, walk past the Sullivan trees, in the middle of that retaining wall, there are steps that go down to 4th Street. So which makes, which makes it an attractive parking lot to people going to the law office.
But where does 4th Street cross under Highway 218?
Well, if you cross Washington Street, you know, all that parking that's under the highway?
Yeah.
It goes from Park Avenue to 6th.
Oh, that doesn't count.
So.
Yeah.
It includes it.
Okay. That doesn't count.
But it makes it very difficult if you want to put up a, like, yeah, overpass or something like that, it makes it a little bit difficult. Or that incline will go straight like this and straight down, but you have to be somewhat accessible.
Handicap.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Mayor, I guess I go back, and I know Billy will confirm this, that that entrance on the 4th Street side is not the main entrance. That's an entrance for employees and board members and that. And it's really, you have to buzz to get in as opposed to the Park Avenue Sullivan Brothers entrance into it. And so I'm just, my suggestion is just to make that a entrance or exit and maybe enhance the looks of that, those steps, because up until this very moment, I did not realize there were steps. And again, Mr. Mayor, I'm the councilman for Ward 3, and I don't even know my word.
And you were on the Grouse Board, weren't you?
Yes, I'm currently on the Grouse Board. So if you want me to resign with two months left, Billy, I will.
So I think, and that's part of the overall study. So we'll take that up and dust that portion off and take a look and see where that's, see where that's at. And I'm surprised you didn't comment on the improved bike lanes conversation on there as well on slide 10 that we presented, so.
Okay, and I think that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So a lot of work to do, a lot of money to figure out where it's going to happen. There are a couple of projects that we would like to see happen before next September when the Iowa League of Cities is in the city of Waterloo. And that is definitely the Sullivan Memorial Plaza as well as the Cedar River Lighting Project as well. So we've got a lot of money to raise.
Mr. Mayor, so the Memorial Plaza isn't totally funded yet?
No, no, we are, we are, I think it's about $550,000 we need to raise. So Kelly and I are going to be out trying to raise dollars, talking to foundations to make that a reality.
Great.
I mean, if you want to make a charitable donation today...
I wrote it down.
All right, all right. Anything else?
Looks great. Looks nice. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, see you in a few minutes.